It's six o'clock, at this time I'll call the regular meeting for Parisi to council Tuesday, June 20th, 2017, the order plays, we have a call. Item three is the invocation in the pledge of allegiance to the flag, if you're able, please rise. I'd like to call on Reverend Robert Jones, councilman, for our invocation.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you for receiving me, and we thank you for the city of Perry and the privilege of being able to pray, Father, we ask that if you seek to leave the city in a way that does not work by your name, you should do as we always pray, in words of Jesus' name and prayer.
I'd like to call on Councilman Randall Walker to lead us in the pledge of allegiance to the flag.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag, of the United States of America, and to the Republic of which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, gentlemen. Item four, citizens with input, if you're a member of the public who wishes to address council on any issue at this time. Yes, please state your name and address.
Wayne Combs, 901 Perimeter Road, apartment 903. Here's some information for you.
Thank you, sir.
And this subject, first of all, I'd like to thank the council and mayor for allowing me to stand before you. The subject, of course, is a traffic on perimeter road. It's not getting any better, it's getting worse. Two years ago, this subject was brought before the council, and the number of things that I read off have not been addressed. So I'd like to bring your attention to the reason why I'm here. It seems like the tickets given on that road covered a couple of years, and there was only 21 speeding tickets. I counted that many speeding cars going down the road in a matter of 30 minutes. The daily radar unit has not been there daily. In fact, I've lived there for going on seven years, and I think I've seen it there once. And the location, coming from the Kroger parking lot, the location of the radar unit was setting in the curve past Gatwick Senior Village. By that time, people that are speeding have slowed down from that curve. So the reading that you get from your radar is no good. There is not enough space, I realize that, to put the radar unit in a proper place to bring it to our attention. The letter that I have here has a few recommendations for people leaving not only Gatwick, but the housing authority across the road. Number one was, how about just making a right-hand turn? Don't take that hazardous left-hand turn, but just make a right-hand turn, and if you're going to Kroger's, that means you've got to go down to 41, over 41, and down Washington, or whatever street that is, to get to Kroger's. There's not a person here that would only go out of their driveway and make a right-hand turn, and then drive almost a mile to get where you're going. The second was to lower the speed limit from 35 to 30, or even down to 25, that has not been done. Add three-way stop at the intersection of perimeter road and perimeter circle, that has not been done. Install solar-powered flashing lights on the approach to each one of these intersections, that has not been done. Install a raised or a painted crosswalk. This will serve two things, it will allow some of us who live in Gatwick, who, I don't drive, so I have to walk, and I'm here to tell you, it's dangerous crossing that perimeter road. There is a sidewalk on the other side. We have one or two people that use a motorized chair, they don't even take that route, they have somebody carry them to where they're going. The last thing that was suggested was install rumble strips on the approach to each one of these intersections. It has been two years since this was brought before the council, before the police department, public works, and so on, and not one single thing has been done. I realize and think about the money that's involved, but let's also think about the lives. There's at least 60-plus people that live in Gatwick, and we're all up in age, we're not as fast on the accelerator or brake as anyone else. No one, and I repeat, no one from Gatwick has been hurt pulling out on perimeter road. And the very last thing, it seems like everybody traveling perimeter road seems to think that's the garbage dump. If you go back on perimeter road and see just how much garbage is scattered along that highway. I want to thank you for my, to bring this before you, that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Combs. Is there anyone else present who wishes to address council at this time? Thank you. Item five is a public hearing. The purpose of this public hearing is to provide any interested parties with an opportunity to express their views and concerns in accordance with OCGA Section 36-67A-3C. Item five A, this is a petition for rezoning and annexation, application number R-17-03. The applicant, Malti Inc., on the behalf of Ski Development LLC, requests rezoning and annexation of property consisting of 107.11 acres, Houston County R-1, to the City of Perry R-2, two-family residential district. The property is located at the northwest corner of Santa Fe Road and Danny Carpenter Drive. Ryan, Mr. Wood.
Mayor and council, this request, as you mentioned, is to annex property and to zone it with a City of Perry zoning classification. The applicant has requested R2. You can see on the map the location of the property. Santa Fe Road is located, Santa Fe Road's located along the bottom here, Danny Carpenter Drive here, this is Mossy Creek Elementary School, and the adjoining writings subdivisions. The council, as you recall, remanded this to the planning commission for reconsideration, given that there have been a number of changes to the proposal. The planning commission held an informational meeting last Monday, and heard from residents in the surrounding area who were opposed to the request. The applicant has provided a modified or conceptual plan. There's the property, there's the aerial, so you can kind of see some of the area around it. And then this is oriented 90 degrees from the property, so north is actually to the left on the screen. But the conceptual plan for this property shows 233 lots. The lots that are in yellow, adjacent to the riding subdivisions, are larger lots, the smaller lots would be in the green area. Access is proposed to connect the, there are four dead-end streets currently that would be connected and closed off from the remaining subdivision, that would then be off of Santa Fe and Danny Carpenter Drive with internal streets. The planning commission ultimately recommended approval of the request, they had five recommended conditions for your consideration. One would be, the property shall be limited to development of single-family detached dwellings only. Number two, at least 30% of the lots shall be at least 14,000 square feet in area, and shall have a minimum lot width of 90 feet. Number three, all lots fronting the roads connecting the existing adjacent subdivision, which is showing in yellow on this plan, shall be at least 16,500 square feet in size. Number four, the areas in the northeast corner of the property showing is recreational wet pond, which is the blue area here, shall be preserved as a recreational amenity. And number five, a pedestrian corridor shall be installed to connect one of the streets being extended from the riding subdivision to Danny Carpenter Drive. So in that, in that, in those recommendations, essentially what would happen are, the number of lots that are currently shown in this yellow area would be reduced to be able to get them all to 16,500 square feet. There are, there is a possibility that the number of lots in the green area could be increased, I don't think there's going to be a substantial difference one way or the other. We did, after the planning commission and in your packet, we have provided a memo just looking at what the difference in number of blocks would be if this were developed under the county's R1 with water sewer availability, given the fact that there's an eight-acre, roughly eight-acre area remaining as recreational area, and I believe it was about 16 or 17 acres in street rights away, that left 82 acres of lot, potential lot area. Given that number, under county R1, 255 lots could be built, and as I mentioned, 233 is what's shown here, give or take when they finalize the, get into details of finalizing the project. So the planning recommendation was for approval with those five conditions. I'll be happy to answer any questions if you have.
Thank you, Mr. Wood. Any questions from council at this time?
I have one. What is a recreational wet pond?
And I'm, that's something that the applicant can answer during the public hearing.
I don't care if they'll answer, just leave it.
Any other questions? He's going to press it when he speaks forward. I'm assuming you're going to speak for the project. Any other questions other than that?
Unless he says something that I want to answer to.
Okay.
He's lost him, I won't say, ask another question, but that's all I want to know right now.
Any other questions?
I didn't speak that time, but I'm going to answer.
Any other questions for council? Thank you. At this time, is there anyone present who wishes to speak for this petition for rezoning and annexation, application number R17-03, as described? Please state your name and address.
My name is Chad Bryant, I'm about 908, 906, Moss Creek, Perry. I represent Ski Development for the estate of the property located on Danny Carpenter Center for Ready and Corner, adjacent to Mossy Creek Elementary School. I know we've tossed around a lot of information. I think this, what we have provided since we last met with y'all, is this drawing that kind of depicts what we've been trying to put together. There are questions around, you know, multiple subdivisions and different lot sizes and all that, and this really kind of illustrates, you know, graphically what is, you know, mine's, I guess. As stated, the yellow portion, those are the larger lots. You know, per City Perry already, we're required to do, meet 85% of the adjacent lots. For clarification for the record as well, the lots that are shown are actually very close in lot size, as far as square footage goes, to the internal lots of the riding subdivision. They're approximately 16,500 square feet, both what we're providing there and what's internal. The reason why we still meet 85%, or we're basically 85% of the adjacent lots is because you can see all those are cul-de-sac lots, cul-de-sac lots are generally bigger because of the pie shape, so you can see that they're much larger than, say, the lots, I may only get it here. The lots adjacent to the, to this end over here, you can kind of see that the ratio of the size of the lots is fairly similar shape. The green portion is the R2-style lot, those with smaller lot depths, smaller depths, especially 12,000 square feet minimum that we were requesting. The yellow part, again, is our, that accounts for about 30%, or like that 30% of our overall lots, with the green portion making up the rest. The recreational area that you're asking about, I don't know if you've been by, but you know, similar to what, you know, we've gone over there, the Adiculph Villages, the preserve, having a large entryway that's, you know, instead of forming a subdivision and having lots and houses immediately starting at the road, this provides more of an open field to be a development. It is a perfect place for us to, there's basically a natural recharge area right there, it's a perfect opportunity just to take advantage of, just to resource and try to use that as an open space area. So that's what we're planning to do, bringing our main interest to there. The location of the driveways, we kind of looked at Santa Fe Road, Danny Carpenter, that became, or both of them. You know, we have basically a four-lane road and a three-lane road at the border, so traffic circulation, trying to basically, if there are certain times of the day, the school, you have traffic backing up from a, from a staffing standpoint, also Danny Carpenter, we want to try to avoid any conflicts with the school, so we're trying to get the entrance as far away to the north as possible with Danny Carpenter, and we just came mid-block on the, as far as the property lines go, on Santa Fe Road. From a traffic standpoint, you figure people more likely by position as far away as possible, people that plan to go north toward 96, are going to use this entrance, people that may go south, are going to use the south entrance more. So that helps to distribute your traffic better than, say, bringing it back closer to the school. There were some questions and concerns about interconnecting between the writings and our subdivision. The way we laid this thing out, we closed ourselves off from the writings, which was a, what we gathered from some of the residents in the initial hearing, that they would like to see some separation there. So you can see that all the, the four roads that currently terminate into the property, we've interconnected them, so all the larger lots interconnect with each other, and is totally separated from the R2. It still provides multiple access points for our fire and our safety, so all that still is addressed. But then, what the negative part of that is that there was some concern about, well, you know, sidewalk and connectivity between the writings, this new yellow portion and the school, because there's no road connecting. So what we were looking at trying to do is provide a corridor between the writings and the development, so there's at least a walking path. You know, so there's currently, right now, the riding subdivision and the adjacent subdivisions have to walk through the field or walk along Santa Fe Road in order to get to Mossy Creek. We believe that this is going to provide a safer access by ways of sidewalks and stuff to the actual crosswalk, which you can see right in the center of the school, you can see kind of real light from the parking lot straight towards Danny Carpenter, with the crosswalk there. So our intent is to provide a safe passage to that point. And I'd like to ask you a question on the recreational area. Not yet, you got, remind me what it was.
What is recreational pond area is?
So basically, what we'd be looking at doing is trying to make it a wet pond for, you know, for aesthetically pleasing area, that'll also meet water quality requirements and things of that nature. What I would like to see, and of course this gets into the design portion, is creating burns and stuff along the perimeter, adjacent to the lots that we pulled in, not seeing fence lines and stuff like that, creating natural burns or things of that nature that we landscape, to just really beautify that area. When, those areas can be used for recreational purposes, and this, you see someone, Southfield Plantation, the preserve of live oak, I mean, the preserve, very preserved, trying to think of some others that may have it. It was friends, and all those having open space wet ponds up front, just provides for a lot, lot better experience, I guess, for the program. So that, that is, I guess that really covers everything as far as the layout goes. I did want to bring back up as far as some of the zoning, on the zoning maps, City of Perry, I think there were some discussions that this particular zoning type is out of character for the area. This is still single-family residential, we're not going into the industrial, we're not going into commercial, single-family residential, we're going from R1 to R2, that's a typical transition, you know, we're not going from R1 to R4, R1 to industrial. So we're still within single-family residential. Also, as a reminder, City of Perry currently has R2 just east of this site on Santa Fe Road, they have an R2 parcel that is less than half a mile from this site, on the right up there, and just behind it, you have, you know, the suburbs of Eagles Block or something, what is that?
What do you mean?
It's got 6,000 square foot lots in it, and all that's within, you know, very, very short distance to this site. It's also worth noting that Houston County actually has an R2 tract that's one parcel over from us, just a catty-corner from the intersection of Santa Fe Road and Danny Carpenter intersection. So, you know, I feel like that we're, you know, well within, you know, our rights to, as a property, and within the planning and zoning laws to transition is probably from the R1 to R2. I feel like with the availability and access to traffic, to sanitary sewage, you know, proximity to the commercial districts, I mean, we're, an R2 is a good fit for this piece of property. You know, I brought it before, the R2 zoning, it's really the most common type of zoning, you know, when you look at areas that have sanitary sewer available. So the reason why the riding subdivision and all these different developments around us are larger lot subdivisions is because they don't have sewer. So when you introduce the availability of sewer, of course, your density increases, your lot size decreases. And that, I mean, that is, that's an environmentally sound thing, right? We don't want second tanks, we don't want to sprawl with everybody having one-acre, two-acre lots, there's got to be some type of, and not everybody wants one or two-acre lots. But also, one thing that Brian kind of already mentioned, if you look at Houston County R1, their density on sewer is really not much different from what we're requesting. I think, you know, what we've done here is we've started with an R2 as a typical piece of property that can allow up to, I think, if we were to typically, an R2 development on 107 acres should, you know, get us between, I think it's 278 units, or, you know, 2.6 or 2.8 units, break, I'm trying to remember what it is, but that's typically what we'll find we see on 107 acres. So we've gone from 278 units, or 278 lots, and we're down to 233, so we should definitely cut what a typical R2 would allow, and we're really almost at what a Houston County R1 could allow. It reminds me that City of Perry requires a much higher lot square footage than, say, than Houston County does. Trying to think, that's the idea. And I think the last thing we talked about was the school, was the bottom, the school itself, across the street, was over capacity, and in fact, we got a letter from Dr. Scott as stating that they're actually under capacity, they actually need, I think it was roughly 200 more students to get that school up to capacity. There was some concern, last, this is the last thing, the person concerned about drainage in the area. Our firm, Malti, has actually done master drainage studies of that entire area, we did them for Houston County Public Works, we studied the writings subdivision, their retention pond, which is on the west side, direction of design, and they constructed a regional pond on the adjacent corner of Santa Fe Road and Danny Carpenter. That retention pond was designed and constructed to detain flows from this subdivision, as well as, as well as upstream of the area. That retention pond is designed to take this subdivision, as well as other, in a developed state. Now, the purpose of this pond is to reduce the flows to pre-construction conditions, so that we should see no flow larger than what they see in pre-construction conditions with that pond, that is its purpose. And I believe I've covered everything I wanted to cover. Thank you for your time, and I'd be glad to take any questions if any.
Mr. Combs, did you get your question in? If you have any other questions? Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Bryant. Is there anyone else present who wishes to speak for this application?
We'll brief Jeff and Jesse, 206 Martin Terrace, I am Ski Development. To add to the pond, it is not set up for swimming or jet skiing, it's just a pond, recreational, maybe a fountain, feeding ducks, walking around it, like you see, like Chad mentioned, I didn't even bring, I'm here for other questions.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak for this application? Thank you. Is there anyone present who wishes to speak against this petition for rezoning and annexation, application number R17-03, as described? Please stand and state your name and address.
Walking Wood, 426 Santa Fe Road. Mayor and council, I'd like to take a shot at finding the retention, the wet recreational area pond for you. Previously, presently, future, unless it's fenced, it will be a gathering place for four-wheelers. It is now, they truck them in there on the weekends and holidays when the kids aren't at school, and there's water in the pond, they go racing through the mud, and they track it out on the road, the road looks like a dirt road sometimes. Those who live around there run up and down the sidewalks on Danny Carpenter, my wife and I, and another gentleman that was with us, almost got run over by a four-wheeler up there, we complained, we took pictures and complained to the Perry Police Department, that young man was taken to magistrate court, and I believe he pled guilty and paid a fine. The worthwhile recreational use of that area is fully protected. I've taken quite a I've taken quite a few pictures up there. I have pictures of whooping drains, sandhill drains, even a bocca, quail, ducks, geese, and all of that up there. That's good, but unless it's fenced, it doesn't stay there very long. It stays overnight and goes away. I would like to show you some pictures of pre-existing flow onto my property from this property. You guys can take a look at it. There they are. My property is on the south side of Santa Fe Road and in front of his own Santa Fe Road, the retention pond that he's talking about there on the corner of Danny Carpenter and Santa Fe. It is, the outflow is on the east side of that. Let me see if I can show you. It's about right in here somewhere. Well, that's the property right in here. Comes under Santa Fe Road and onto my property, and that's where those pictures were taken of me standing in that water. It was me being. What Chairman Sonica told me about it, he said, "I thought you had better sense than to go in there without boots on." Kind of clear the ignorance, but I was at that time trying to define what a recreational wet pond is. Those two areas right there collect the runoff from the ridings. They collect some runoff from the school property. There are at least two inflows under Danny Carpenter that come into this area. I think these people need to go back out there and take a look at that property, and I'd be glad to give them a guide or if they want me to. But that property right there drains down here, and it comes into the retention pond in this area down here, and it comes under Santa, under Danny Carpenter Road, that's a right turn and goes under Santa Fe Road right here in this area where my property. Additionally, there is an outlet from the school property that does not feed into the retention pond. It just empties into the woods here with an open pipe and runs over Mr. Barnes' property down here in this area and joins the outflow from this pond and goes under Santa Fe Road and onto my property, and that's what you see right here. Additionally, Santa Fe Road has become a three-lane racetrack. And anybody who wants to go out there and stand in the middle of it and count traffic has got more bravado than I do. I think that there is a solution to that problem out there with developing this property. I'm big on property rights myself, and I think these gentlemen have a right to develop their property if that's what they want to do. But I also think that they have an obligation to make it commensurate with the other property around there. Now, if anybody here wants to go into the snafus that were involved with Wooden Eagle and R1s and R2s and PDDs and all that stuff, I have the history right here, and I'll be glad to discuss it with anybody who wants to talk about it. And then briefly, when the county concurred with development of that property, Wooden Eagle, a stipulation was made that you could not start building until it had sewer out there. Well, the developer went ahead and started building anyway. I don't know how he got building permits, but he did. They were even selling houses and had people living out there till we discovered that and filed a complaint with the county, and they came to the City of Perry and said, "You've got to get this fixed." And that's when the sewer was put out there. It was not put out there for Wooden Eagle official. It was put out there to get the developer out of a jam. I believe that cooperation between City of Perry and the county can solve this problem, and I believe they can solve it amicably, but R2 is not it. That whole area there encompassed by Danny Carpenter and Santa Fe Road, the ridings, Royal Oaks, Magnolia Hill, and all of that stuff is a R1 property. The nearest R2 that I know anything about is possibly the church home over on 41. I don't know what lot size they have, but the gentleman talks about an R2 lot. I don't know where it is. It's county-owned. I lived living out there off of, my dad bought that property in 1945, and except for 25 years in the Navy that I was away from here, I have lived out there since I was three years old, and I just don't know about any R2 out there. So I think that this thing needs to go back to the planning, and it needs to be amicably resolved between the county and the City of Perry, and some consideration given to the folks who already live out there. Incidentally, that property was purchased as R1 property. It was not purchased as R2 property. It wasn't even purchased contingent on being developed as R2 property. So there's, there's history here for R1 to be used out there, whether it's county, whether the city or whatever. I think we can do a lot better than R2.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Wood. Is there anyone else present who wishes to speak against this application? Yes, sir.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. My name is Edward R. Mavensky. I live at 602 Stockport in Cork, in Tyler Ridge, which is not shown on this map, but is below it. We have had significant history during the course of discussions with regard to the development of this property. I'm not going to repeat that for everyone, but as you know, I've previously come to speak against it. I raised my hand during that period because I have some objections to the way that this has been put tonight, but I don't want to, what I don't want to do is leave you with the impression, though the way that perhaps I did the last time, that I'm totally opposed, because I'm not. Since that time, we have had discussions, Mr. Wood facilitated discussions with Mr. Woszewski and to residents. There have been plenty of discussions, and Mr. Woszewski has made an effort to accommodate a number of our concerns. That said, we still have some concerns that have not been resolved, and we took those concerns to the Planning Commission and again, we'll bring them to you tonight. The Planning Commission heard those concerns and specifically made an effort to incorporate some of them into its own recommendations. One thing I heard Mr. Wood say, and I wanted to be clear on it, he talked about the fronting property. The truth is, the Planning Commission indicated that its intent was that all of the yellow, which I would not say is all fronting property, I would only argue, pardon, that this property is fronting property, but as, as the developer himself stated, it does not make sense to have, a failure to have symmetry on both sides. So what the, as envisioned by the Planning Commission was actually that all the yellow would retain the 165. So it's important that if you're going to go along with that, which I hope you would, that the ordinance actually reflects that, that understanding. I am concerned, as Mr. Hunt apparently is, about what a wet pond is. I fear that it could just turn out to be a detention pond much like was in front of Kensington. I would hope not, Mr. Woszewski says not, but right now there are no specific descriptions that would allay those concerns. So I think it's important that the ordinance capture better the, the, the character of what that water, water feature should be, which right now I don't feel that it does. I heard the discussion of the corridor. The Planning Commission heard our concerns about the, about children's safety for walking to the middle school and specifically put that requirement in there. Unfortunately, this drawing shows no such corridor, not what I necessarily expected to, because there wasn't necessarily time to revise the drawing. However, I think it's very important that that corridor be emphasized. The corridor is critical. I talked a short later after the pre-council meeting, but I want, I want to really stress this. I didn't bring a picture of it with me tonight, but the intersection of Danny Carpenter and Santa Fe is, is not a nice clean intersection. It involves two approximately 45-degree angles of crosswalk to safety zones. It also involves a hill where visibility is very limited. That's a terrible intersection to cross. And so, a corridor that would allow the use of existing crosswalk is really critical to the safe development of this property, and that absolutely is something that, that we stressed the whole way through since the very first Planning Commission meeting, and is, is absolutely critical. Assuming that the water feature, sorry to jump around, but my notes aren't the best. Assuming that the water feature is continued, I heard a description that it was eight acres. That eight acres is actually important, whether it's blue space or green space, however it's counted. The reality is that it takes away from the number of houses in the area and provides a different type of view, and that was part of some of the issues that citizens raised and that Mr. Woszewski attempted to accommodate. Now, I do understand that people have concerns, as I knew, about what that, what that feature would look like, and so that's why I said it wasn't important. However, I also proposed to the Planning Commission that the small number, the 30% number, is, is still inconsistent with the, with the neighborhood. Now, I did some looking at Tiffany and other areas, particularly where Mr. Woszewski has done, done development and building, and I'll tell you, he does, he does beautiful work. I've seen, I've seen his houses. It's not about that. What it is about, though, is the, is the character of feeling. Now, I understand some people want small lots. I do. I understand some people want smaller houses. We're concerned, though, about the fact that our neighborhood right now, in terms of Magnolia Hill and the ridings and Tyler Ridge, is really all, it's families. I mean, I have a wife and three kids. Most of my neighbors have two, three, some have four kids. We have different numbers of bedrooms in our houses. There are, the average lot size in, in the Tyler Ridge and Ridings area that, that actually above this property is actually closer to 18,000 square feet, because there's some really large lots and double lots and things like that. I'm not suggesting that, that to you, because I just wanted to point that out. There's one lot that's almost 30,000 square feet, huge. What's important, though, is the question of how much change can that area sustain before the character changes. I propose that a better number was 70%, but I would say that 50% is, is even superior. In fact, I would even go so far to say that if 50% of the property were at a 14,000 square foot area or larger, that, that I would advance, I would support that to the county. I would say, yes, this is something that we have met and talked about. I'm not going to try to speak for anybody else here tonight, listen to me. So I can't tell you that they would agree to that, but I'd say that's something I would agree to. I'd be willing to go on Mr. Woszewski's behalf at that point to the county and say, "I, I, I would agree to this." I'd be willing to tell you tonight that, that I would agree to that. And I think that that would be, that would be a fair, a really fair compromise to accommodate these sorts of issues. I'm not going to speak against R2 at all. I've looked at a number of subdivisions in the area, regardless of the zoning, what really matters is how it's plotted and other things, and so the restriction would be fine if it were R2. So whether it's R2 or not is not a concern to me, as long as the lot sizes and the character of the area are adequately maintained. So, so I know I've jumped around a bit, I'm sorry for that. To reiterate those key points, I think it's very important to read them, to define the water feature, particularly in terms of its blue space, green space, whatever you want to call it, in terms of its acreage and character. I would like to see a 50%, at least 50% 14,000 square feet. I wanted to make a note that the Planning Commission actually included the whole yellow area in all of its discussions, and that the, the safety corridor is, is really, really critical. I have one final point there. There's no four-lane road here. It's, it's three-lane roads, because there are, there are turn lanes. So I'm not sure where that came from, but neither of these roads is a, is a four-lane road. I heard that at the Planning Commission meeting, and I heard it tonight, so I wanted, I wanted to correct that. So I want to thank you for, for hearing me out. Appreciate that. I know that the Planning Commission made a huge effort to hear out the citizens, and I wanted to note that, because they heard a lot of, a lot of comments, and I thought they were, did a great job in trying to consider those things. But despite that, we still ask, I ask, that you consider this further, because the decision you're making affects all of us that live in that area as long as we live there. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else present who wishes to speak against? Yes, sir.
Mayor and council, I appreciate you the opportunity to allow me to speak on this application tonight. Thank you. I am Roland Berry. I'm a resident of Houston County. I live at 213 Spanish Trail in Royal Oaks. My wife and I have lived at 213 for 13 years, and we plan to be there for time to come. My home is one-third of a straight-line mile, as you've probably heard me say this before. I heard it coming up here speaking to you about it, but a one-third of a straight-line mile from the ski development parcel that is under the application at this time. I rise and I speak in opposition to the application as it is stated now. Now, I've got a different twist. The revised application has 70% of the, of the lots at 12,000 square feet or your R2 per your R2. And, and I get that the Generation X and Generation Y families want smaller homes, I mean, smaller lots with bigger homes. I have two of those. I have a Generation X daughter, and I have a Generation Y son. My daughter lives in a 2,900 square foot home on a 6,000 square foot lot in Raleigh, North Carolina. My son lives in London, Georgia. He lives in, again, a two-story, 2,400 square foot home on a 10,000 square foot lot. So I, I get and understand how the Generation X and the Generation Y families want the smaller lots. And it's really basic. They don't want to spend the time doing the yard work, and what they want is the additional amenities built into those homes so they have more time to spend with their family and doing family-like activities. And it's that, it's that simple. And I deal with that all the time with my, with my daughter and my son. So I understand that there is a need to have some of these lots at the 12,000 square foot. And I, I think some of you will understand, those of you that have children that are, that were born in that area, you'll, you'll see that they will want those smaller lots. But, but that is not who we are in the West Kathleen area. I would say if you ride around the West Kathleen area, and I kind of say that, it's 96, the Santa Fe, 41, over to Danny Carpenter, that big block there, if you drive around to Heather Sage, Addington, Sawtooth, Magnolia Hill, Sweet Bay, River Valley Trail, Tangier, or Dawlington, and just look at the lots and the homes that are there, for the most part, they, I would say not for the most part, almost all, not almost all, are R1, and they are almost all large lots and larger homes. And I have struggled with this, trying to figure it out. Why, you know, I really want to understand why that is the case. And the only thing that I can come up with is there is a military connection, a little bit deeper military connection of the families in this area than there is in, in your normal Perry subdivisions. And I take my own home, for example, there I have, because I live on a corner, I have six neighbors. Of the six, five of them are military-connected. I have an active-duty major, I have a retired Air Force Lieutenant Colonel, I have a government civilian who retired, and I have an Air Force NCO retired. On my west side, I have a, a government contractor who has now moved to Dayton, and they're selling their house. And then the, there is, we have a Warner Robbins fireman that lives across the street from me that is not military-connected. So what I've come to conclude is that this area, I believe, and I don't have the percentages or the figures, but it is, it has a deeper number of military-connected families, and I think you got to understand, if you get moved around like I have 14 times in your career, you've lived in a lot of small houses. And sometimes when you live in military houses and military housing, you are jammed up next to your neighbor. to your neighbor, and I mean, I'm talking about tight. And when you retire or you get out of military service, you come to the point where you don't want that anymore. And so what happens is when we have a lot of these military that they come to the Houston County area either through Robbins Air Force Base or as a government civilian at Robbins, what they want is a little more space, not less space. So I've really tried to be really introspective in why we are the way we are. Why are there an abundance of large lots and large houses? And to understand that, you have to go door-to-door in those neighborhoods like I have for the past five and six years and talk to your neighbors and find out who they are. And so this is how I've come to this explanation of why we are who we are, that we are more military-connected. And I cite Dr. Urbansky here, he's military-connected. Mr. Wood here, retired military. I'm a retired military and a retired government employee, and lots of my neighbors fall into that category. So I think that's an explanation of who we are and why we moved out there is the best that I can conclude, having lived there for 13 years and walked by neighborhoods many, many times. Now, rezoning the development to parcel to R2, from my perspective, after I have explained this to you, it is, in my judgment, incompatible with the other neighborhoods. And all you got, like I said, all you got to do is drive around to these subdivisions and look at it, and you will understand that it is generally incompatible. Well, so I am also torn. I know that there's Generation X and Generation Y families who need these smaller lots, who want to live that different lifestyle. I also know that there is a lot of military and military-connected families like myself, Mr. Urbansky, Mr. Wood, who want the larger homes because we've lived in those squatty little places all over the world. So I'm willing to compromise too, like Mr. Urbansky. I think a few more of the 14,000-square-foot lots, and I would concur, I would ask for 70% if we could negotiate to 50%, but I think the 50% is the right number. And like Mr. Urbansky, if we could get to that point, I would be more than willing to personally go and visit Mr. Chairman Stoner or any, I think it's Commissioner Thompson who does the planning and zoning there at the county. I would be happy to visit either or both of those on his behalf if we could bring that number up to, from where it is now, 30% of the lots at 14,000 square foot, up to, say, 50%. But as it is now, I am opposed, but I would not be opposed if we could raise that number to the 50%. So council, I again ask you to oppose and vote against the ski development application as it stands now. And unless you have any questions to me, I yield.
Thank you, sir.
Is there anyone else present who wishes to speak against this application as described? Yes, sir.
Mayor, councilman, women, my name is Dwayne White. I stay at 258 Heather Sage Drive. I said this application be sent back to the planning commission. There have been some assurances that stuff will be done, but I like to see stuff in writing. I like to see hard copies. I can assure my mortgage company that I'm going to get them my mortgage, but unless they see the check, my assurances are worth nothing. I'm concerned about the safety corridor. I would like to see that in the planning. I would like to see what is the wet pond, what is exactly, what's going to be on that wet pond right there? We need to see that. Is there going to be fencing around it? What's going to be the details as far as mosquitoes and stuff like that? Just a little small stuff, trees or what's exactly, is the wet pond going to look like in the end, instead of just looking at a blue warning hole, which is what I see right now with this plan? But this is the plan that's going to be presented to you guys that's going to, that they assure that it's going to be changed into something different. I want to see the safety corridor because I have a daughter right now who's six, and by the time she's of age to go to the middle school, the housing build will be done. Well, this date and time right now, we were sure that it's going to be a safety corridor there when it, after construction, without it being in writing on paper or in front of us, would a safety corridor be there when she become of age to go to the middle school? So I would like just, I said this goes back to the planning commission again, and that a thorough and a very detailed, more detailed map be drawn of what the planning commission asked to be done, the files deemed they ought to be done, that we see a hard copy of it so we can be more than just assured that this will be done, assured that this wet pond would look like this and be like this so that we can see different things. And then one other thing that came out of the planning commission last week was that one of the members made a very interesting point. He calculated that going from R1 to R2 is only 19 homes involved. If that R2 became R1, it's a difference of only about 19 to 20 homes. So basically, he asked us, are we talking about the difference between 19, 20 homes between an R1 to R2? And he asked him the same question. Is this what we're talking about here, the difference of 20 homes? So it would be nice to see a R1 map drawn of less than 21 homes, to see what it would look like. And then finally, the assurances that that retention pond will not spill over into this gentleman's yard. We don't have no plan, no hard copy. Once again, just have assurances that we're not drawing. But we don't have nothing stating, nothing, engineering data, should I say, that that pond will more houses, it's already going in his yard right now, and then we're going to add more houses to it? Now, I'm not an engineer, but I put two and two together, more means you're going to have more water going into this gentleman's yard. What's the assurances? What's the hard copy? What's the data to say that that retention pond would not cause this gentleman even more water in his yard? So once again, I'm opposed to the plan as the way it is now. I said, please go back to the planning commission so that we can physically see with our eyes what the final stage is going to be. Thank you very much for your time and allow me to come up and speak to you. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Is there anyone else present who wishes to speak against this application?
Mr. Mayor, if it would be appropriate, I'd like to just make a couple of clarification, comments, clarification. The area in yellow, the planning commission did recommend that all of those lots be 16,000 square feet. I was referring to the city code that says only the lots that are adjoining should be 16,000 square feet, as clarified. Secondly, when the ordinance comes up on the screen, you will see in black and white those conditions that the planning commission brought forth, which are in the ordinance. And thirdly, a number of these issues relating to detention, retention, those items will need to be verified by staff as they further develop the plan. There are stormwater requirements in the ordinance that have to be complied with, and that will be done at administrative level to make that verification.
Just a question to follow up on that. There's five different stipulations within this ordinance, and it's my assumption that if this were to be passed, it would be your department's responsibility as the final drawings are completed, that all of these will be incorporated as the final within this ordinance.
That's correct. The process for this going forward, if the council adopts, is the applicant needs to will have to bring a preliminary plan to the planning commission, and that's where we will verify lot sizes and numbers and so forth. An area that is to be wet, recreational wet pond and all of those standards, the planning commission will presumably approve that. They would then go into more detail of how the drainage actually works, what size pipes are needed, and all those details, and then come back to the planning commission for final plan approval to verify all of that. So yes, there are a number of steps moving forward that would then, that we would go through to verify compliance with these conditions and other requirements of the city code. One other point I wanted to make about this, we had agreed that there were not going to be any changes between the planning commission and this city council meeting, and that's why this plan has not been altered. So just going to add that.
Thank you. Remember, council, have any other points of clarification with Mr. Wood?
Thank you.
This public hearing is now closed. Item six is a review of minutes. Item six, eight, council, for your consideration, you have been provided the minutes of the June 5th, 2017 work session, the June 6th, 2017 pre-council meeting, and the June 6th, 2017 council meeting. At this time, I will entertain a motion that we approve these minutes as presented.
Thank you, sir.
As a motion and a second, if there are any additions, changes, deletions, or discussions concerning the minutes at this time. Hearing none, all those in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously. Mr. Walker, did you have a question?
Item seven is old business. Item seven A is an ordinance for the second reading and adoption. Item seven A one, this is the second reading of an ordinance to rezonate property consisting of 107.11 acres from Houston County R-1, the City of Perry R-2, two-family residential district with the following conditions. Number one, the property shall be limited to development of single-family detached dwellings only. Number two, at least 30% of the lots shall be at least 14,000 square feet in area and shall have a minimum lot width of 90 feet. Number three, all lots fronting the roads connecting to the existing adjacent subdivision shown in yellow on the conceptual plan presented to the planning commission shall be at least 16,500 square feet in size. Number four, the areas in the northeast corner of the property shown as quote recreational wet pond end quote on the conceptual plan presented to the planning commission shall be preserved as recreational amenity. And five, a pedestrian quarter shall be installed through the proposed subdivision to connect one of the streets being extended from the Ridings subdivision to Danny Carpenter Drive. The property is located at the northwest corner of Santa Fe Road and Danny Carpenter Drive. Council, this is a second reading of an ordinance, and it is time for action on this particular matter. At this time, I will entertain a motion that determines your pleasure.
Mayor, I will make a motion that we accept the planning commission's recommendation based upon the five stipulations that are outlined here, plus one additional stipulation is that the final concept drawing that comes from the developer will not exceed the density that would be the same density as County R1 on the piece that's going to be built on.
Thank you, Mr. Walker. I have a motion. The floor is thirsty.
With the County R1 with urban gutter and so where it goes, if you don't, then you're talking about 25,000 square feet, but this is the 14,000, trying to address the 14,000 square foot concern.
It's council. There's a motion on the floor. It's council clear on the motion. Okay. Is there a second? There's a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously.
Item seven A two, council, this is the second reading of an ordinance to annex property consisting of 107.11 acres from Houston County R-1, the City of Perry R-2, two-family residential district with the following conditions. Number one, the property shall be limited to development of single-family detached dwellings only. Number two, at least 30% of the lots shall be at least 14,000 square feet in area and shall have a minimum lot width of 90 feet. Number three, all lots fronting the roads connecting to the existing adjacent subdivision shown in yellow on the conceptual plan presented to the planning commission shall be at least 16,500 square feet in size. Number four, the areas in the northeast corner of the property shown as quote recreational wet pond end quote on the conceptual plan presented to the planning commission shall be preserved as recreational amenity. And number five, a pedestrian quarter shall be installed through the proposed subdivision to connect one of the streets being extended from the Ridings subdivision to Danny Carpenter Drive. The property is located at the northwest corner of Santa Fe Road and Danny Carpenter Drive. Council, at this time, I will entertain a motion that shows your pleasure.
I would make a motion that we accept the planning commission's recommendation of the property with the same stipulation of the six issue on that was outlined in the zoning statement.
There's a motion on the floor. Is there a second? Motion is second. Any further discussion? As a point of clarification, Mr. Walker, this motion to annex the property at this time.
Yes, and I will make sure that they're both reflected, that the zoning and the annexation is the same.
Is the same. That clarification, clear to you, Mr. Jones, for the second. Does council have any questions concerning the clarity of this motion as stated? The whole would have recovered it. Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously. Item seven A three, council, this is the second reading of an ordinance amending the Perry land development ordinance, section 93.1.10 and section 118, as it relates to the standards for chain link fencing. Mr. Wood.
Mayor and council, this request is modifying the chain link fence requirements so that on commercial properties it is at the front or behind the building, at the front line or behind the building, it will not be in the front yard, and any chain link fencing visible from the street would be covered with the final thirty counts.
Thank you, Mr. Wood. Does any member of council have any questions of Mr. Wood or any member of staff concerning this particular ordinance amendment?
Hearing none, at this time, I will entertain a motion to adopt this ordinance amending the Perry land development ordinance, section 93.1.10 and section 118, as it relates to the standards for chain link fencing as described. Is the motion, is there a second?
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Item seven A four, council, this is the second reading of an ordinance that will adopt the fiscal year 2018 operating budget for the city period. Mr. Gilmore.
Thank you, mayor. Mayor and council, any other questions? It is the proposed ordinance to adopt the FY18 operating budget. Any of the points discussed or questions have been addressed. There were no comments one way or other in the official public hearing. There is no tax increase proposed in this budget, and we recommend to you to adopt.
Thank you, Mr. Gilmore. Does any member of council have any questions with Mr. Gilmore's staff concerning this operating budget as presented? Hearing none, at this time, I will entertain a motion that we adopt this ordinance that adopts the fiscal year 2018 operating budget for the city period as described. As a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Mr. Gilmore, is any other old business we need to attend to under this said section? Thank you. Item eight, is any other old business? Item A is any other old business. Item A is any other old business from the mayor. I have none. Item A B is any other old business from council members. Mr. Blombrace?
Have none.
Mr. Jones?
No.
Mr. Wallace?
No.
Mr. Hunt?
No.
Mr. Jackson?
No.
Thank you. Item A C is any other old business from the city manager, Mr. Gilmore.
No, sir.
Thank you. Item A D is any other old business from the city attorney, Mr. Holbert.
No, sir.
Thank you. Item nine is new business. Item nine A are matters that have been referred from the June nineteenth, two thousand seventeen work session that we held last night, and the June twentieth, two thousand seventeen pre-council meeting we held at five P M. this afternoon. Gilmore, are there any matters from either one of those meetings that we need to address at this time? Thank you. Item nine B, your resolutions for consideration and adoption. Item nine B one is a resolution that establishes the city of Perry animal retention policy. Counsel, after discussion at the pre-council meeting at five o'clock, it is my understanding that it is the consensus of council that we table this motion, that, excuse me, this resolution for further study, and it will be brought up at our meeting in July. So based on that consensus, at this time I will entertain a motion that we table this resolution as described. There's a motion in the second. Need discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously. Item nine B two, this is a resolution accepting the maintenance of certain infrastructure at Legacy Park, phase two portion of section one and all of section two. Mr. Murray.
Yes, mayor and council, Legacy Park has been suspended by city staff. We find it to be acceptable. We recommend approval of section, section Legacy Park.
Thank you, Mr. Murray. Does any member of council have any questions of Mr. Murray or staff regarding this item at this time? Thank you, sir. At this time, I will entertain a motion that we adopt this resolution accepting the maintenance of certain infrastructure at Legacy Park, phase two portions of section one and all of section two as described. There's a motion in the second. Need discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Item nine B, excuse me, nine C, we're being asked for the approval of a proposal for engineering services. Mr. Wood.
Mayor and council, this is a request to approve a contract for engineering services to consolidate development plan review with one company. Georgia Water and Environmental Services was the, was the only responder to our request for proposals. We did send that out to at least five qualified companies, and it was available, it was publicly advertised. We are comfortable with the proposal. It's for one year. The fee schedule is in line with what we are currently being charged, and we recommend the approval.
Thank you, Mr. Wood. Does any member of council have any questions of Mr. Wood concerning engineering services as described? Thank you, sir. Counsel, at this time, I will entertain a motion that we approve the proposal for engineering services as described. Are the motions are second? Motion is second. Need further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Item nine B, we're being asked to approve amending the contract with Griffin Oldson Construction LLC relative to the Main Street Water Main Improvements Project to provide for additional valve work. Mr. Murray.
Yes, mayor and council, in your package you received a memo from me and a diagram discussing Main Street Water Main concerns there. We have uncovered three very old valves, like installed between nineteen thirty and nineteen forty. In our current plans, it was not required for these valves to be removed, additional new valves were to be installed, and bypasses created for them. Once uncovered, we realize that these have a potential problem for the city, and we would like to, for council's approval, to move forward with either option A, removal, or option B, to keep these valves in place.
Does any member of council have any questions of Mr. Murray regarding this particular Thank you, sir. Counsel, at this time I'll entertain a motion that we approve amending the contract with Griffin Oldson Construction LLC relative to Main Street Water Main Improvements Project to provide for additional valve work, subject to... I believe it's option B, that will change, is change work directed to remove the old existing valves with installation of new valves and piping as planned, and option A, the removal of these three old valves will require three line stops or a hub stop, and the line stops are costly, however, they're required because the proper isolation valves were not installed with original piping in the nineteen thirties. Is that, is that what we've discussed? Mr. Gilmore.
Want to pull the valve? Take it out.
Well, I want to repeat all that, but I'm asking for a motion to approve what I just said. So moved. Thank you. That's probably not kosher, Mr. Holbert, but will it work?
Yes.
Will it make it work?
Yes.
There's a motion of some kind on the table. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Mr. Gilmore, are there any other new business that need to come before us at this time?
No, sir.
Thank you. Item ten, our councilmember items. Mr. Blombrace?
I have none.
Mr. Jones?
No.
Mr. Walker?
No, sir.
Mr. Hunt?
No.
Mr. Jackson?
No.
Mr. Gilmore?
No, sir.
Over. Thank you. Item eleven, our departmentate items. We'll start with the Department of Economic Development. Mr. Smith.
Mr. Mayor, one item for y'all this evening. The city of Perry housing team will be hosting, hosting the first ever Perry Housing Fair on June twenty-ninth. That's next Thursday. We'll have a number of resources and exhibitors there available to assist homeowners or prospective homeowners here in Perry or outside Perry. These sort of issues they might be having in regards to homeownership, home construction, making improvements to their home, legal type issues, wills and, and heir properties and that type of thing. Really, there should be something for everybody. The event starts at three o'clock in the afternoon, goes until six o'clock. It'll be held at Faith Bible Fellowship Church, five-one-seven MLK Junior Drive here in Perry. We'll have refreshments and prizes. It's free, and all are welcome to attend, so hope to see everyone there. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. From the Department of Lakeshadow Services, Mr. Guy.
One on, mayor, thank you. Mayor, council, and public, just wanted to remind everybody, we are planning our second annual community water battle at Rosa Park. That will be Saturday, July first. At one P M., the hoses will fire. It was a valued effort last year, but we lost it. We expect the same, but if it's a hundred degrees like it was last year, we'll let the fire department away.
You're not conceding, are you?
No. May, perhaps one o'clock, one P M.
One to five.
No, one o'clock to two o'clock. More than that. If that being said, I mean, think something, Mr. Hunt, if weather is not permitting, there's not going to be spaces. We have done a lot of, and all that stuff, and it's, it's hard for, to get staff and fire on a council. I'd love to see you guys. We have it out there on social media, calling the services department if you have any questions. That's it. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir. From the Department of Community Development, Mr. Wood.
I have nothing further to say, sir.
Thank you. From the Police Department, Chief Lynn.
Nothing, sir.
Thank you. From the Department of Municipal Administration, Ms. King.
Nothing, sir.
Thank you. From the Fire Emergency Services Department, Chief Parker.
Nothing tonight, sir.
Thank you. From the Office of City Clerk, Ms. Warren.
Nothing, sir.
Thank you. And from the Public Works Department, Mr. Shell.
Nothing tonight, sir.
Thank you. Ms. Price, I don't leave you out. You okay over there?
Okay.
From a media specialist, Ms. Palmer. Anything for us tonight?
Nothing tonight, sir.
Thank you. Has anybody not spoken tonight?
It wants to.
Thank you. Thank you. It's a great meeting. Item, item twelve is general public items. This is your chance. Does any member of the general public who wishes to address counsel and need the item Thank you. Item thirteen, the mayor items. I will remind counsel that this Friday through Tuesday of this coming weekend, we have the Georgia Municipal Association's Annual Convention in Savannah. You will know by now that this is the opportunity for each of us to, to obtain the continuing education credits by, through the classes that we are required to have every year. It also is an opportunity for us to rub elbows with our compadres across the state. There's five hundred and thirty-seven or so cities in the state, and the majority of them are represented. We have enjoyed these events over the years. It's an excellent opportunity for us to not only see them, learn some things, but also meet with the Georgia Municipal Association staff, and let them know what any concerns that we have going forward. Also, on Sunday begins the Fourth of July festivities. You may know that the three cities in Houston County jointly participate in celebration of the July Fourth of events. We started in the city period with a parade. It will happen Sunday afternoon at six o'clock. It will start in front of city hall out here and go out to the fairgrounds, at which time there will be music and fireworks displayed. It is usually a good time, weather permitting, right, Ms. Blombrace?
Yes.
Thank you. You heard it here first. The other events that we have going, we generally have the walk of mayor council on the Fourth Tuesday, which will be the next Tuesday, and since we will be involved with, you are coming back from the Georgia Municipal Association Annual Convention, we have decided to postpone that walk at this time. Our next regularly scheduled meeting is scheduled for a work session on July the third at five P M. Our next regularly scheduled council and pre-council meeting would normally be July the fourth, which is the first Tuesday, but we will not have it at that time because it is a holiday. Ms. Warren, will you remind me when we have decided to have that meeting?
We do not.
We do not. Assuming that that meeting doesn't happen, the next regularly scheduled council and pre-council meeting will be the second Tuesday, excuse me, the third Tuesday of July, which will be the eighteenth, which follows the work session on the seventh. That's all I have at this time. If there's nothing further to come for us, thank you for your interest in participation with Standard Ground.